Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, March 4th, 2024. I ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are feeling blessed and thankful for the odds of the weather, certainly last week, and hopefully tonight we'll kind of move around Batavia and not do any damage to our community. And we hope that's the same truth for the Chicagoland area. Last week was a kind of a real hit and miss situation, and our ESDA department and our police and fire departments did a phenomenal job in dealing with some very unique types of circumstances that occurred. And so I just wanted to offer a special blessing and thanks to them tonight for the good efforts that they went through last week. And I know that they're out watching right now to see if a storm that's to the northwest of us comes near us. As always tonight, we want to ask for a blessing on our community and be thankful for the many attributes and blessings that we have received as a town over these many years. We just ask for advice and vision and guidance on the members of the city councils as they go about the items of business before us tonight, knowing that in our community, we are always thankful for many, many things that have happened, and we are most appreciative for them. Finally, tonight, we want to ask for a special blessing on all those from our community who are sick or affirmed, and ask that they be returned to good health in the near term. And we know that there are a number of people who are fighting various diseases and bodily functions and things that are happening to them. So we just ask for special blessings on them. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Serrano, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, do please call the roll.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Sulfah.
Wolf.
Here.
Chantet.
Aaron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Vogel Singer.
Here.
So we have 12.
Yeah, 12, too.
We have a quorum to conduct business, 12 present, two absent. Okay, moving to item number four. As a reminder, if you're going to address the city council tonight, we ask that you please use the podium and the microphone because this is being recorded for BATV. And if you don't speak into the microphone, nobody on TV watching can understand what you're saying. Moving into item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything from the city council? Very good. Moving to item number six, and Alderman Chantet is not here, so Alderman Beck, do you have this?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole Minutes from January 30th, 2024, and February 19th, 2024, Special Meeting; the Plan Commission Minutes from August 2nd, 2023, and September 20th, 2023, and October 4th, 2023; the Historic Preservation Commission Minutes from January 22nd, 2024; and for approvals, March 1st, 2024, payroll in the amount of $1,030,885.36; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $995,951.25; and the city council minutes from February 19th, 2024; Resolution 2024-31-R authorizing the sale of municipally-owned real estate west of 841 Morton Street; Resolution 2024-30-R authorization to purchase a 2024 John Deere 5075M utility tractor with loader bucket and John Deere FC10R flex wing rotary cutter; Resolution 2024-32-R authorization to purchase a 2024 Bowmag 90AD5 asphalt roller; Ordnance 2024-22 declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the sale thereof; Ordnance 2024-23 amendment to the official zoning map for R0 Single Family District to R1L Single Family Low Density District for 316 Roberts Lane, 946, and 1012 Main Street; 209, 210, 213, 230, 231, 304, 305, 314, 315, 323, 332, 333, 342 Evergreen Drive; Resolution 2024-19-R consideration of an application for grant funds offered through the city's Downtown Signage Assistance Program to Subway at 108 North Batavia Avenue in the amount of $1,000; and Ordnance 2024-11 authorizing execution of a forgivable loan in the amount of $125,000 with the Batavia Artists Association doing business as Water Street Studios. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Do by Alderman Beck, second by Alderman Lehman. Any discussion? Per call the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serrano.
Aye.
Vogel Singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. And let the record reflect that Alderman Chantet has entered the meeting. So glad to have you here. Okay, moving then to item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to address this tonight for something that's not on the agenda? All right. Okay, moving to item number eight, which is a presentation on the severe weather preparedness week by Mark Davis, who is our ESDA Director. Mark?
Good evening. I was here last city council meeting, and I mentioned that it was Illinois' severe preparedness week, and that we'll be sounding the sirens tomorrow for seven minutes. Well, the National Service threw us a curveball, and they decided they're going to have the test, the drill, on Wednesday at 11 o'clock to coincide with their National Weather Service weather radio test. So tomorrow, we'll be sounding the sirens, but we'll do it the regular one minute like we normally do. We will not sound the sirens on Wednesday. I don't want to scare the heck out of everybody because it's not a normal day sounding the sirens. And plus, we tested them last week anyway.
They work.
Well, that'll be our next presentation. Next, as you all know, we had our second confirmed tornado hit the city of Batavia proper in less than a year. We did sound the sirens, and of course, there's a lot of confusion. I answered a few emails here and there. We had a few others wanting to know why. They couldn't hear the siren. They were in their house. Why didn't it go run longer? So I decided to make a little video so to clear things up. It's on our City of Batavia Facebook page. It's also on the City of Batavia Facebook page, and a couple of the police department, I think, posted it also. So this is what it is, and I'm going to make this short because I might have to go run out and sound the sirens again. So I don't want to take too long here. But I see it. See, otherwise known as Batavia. I'll start it over. Hello, I'm Captain Mark Davis, manager of the City of Batavia's Emergency Services and Disaster Agency, otherwise known as Batavia ESDA. The spring severe weather season is upon us, and I thought we'd go over some useful information that should be helpful to the citizens of Batavia and the surrounding communities in the Fox River Valley. First, let's go over the city's outdoor warning system. As the name implies, it's meant to warn anyone outside that severe weather is approaching. It's not meant to warn people inside. But if you happen to live near a siren, you might be able to hear it depending on certain conditions. But there's no guarantees. Batavia has nine such sirens placed across the city to ensure as much coverage as possible. It has two signals. The first signal is the alert tornado signal. It has activated the event of tornado, thundercloud, rotating wall cloud, golf ball-sized hail, or 15 mile per hour winds reported approaching Batavia by a train spotter. The siren will be constant and will sound for seven minutes. Second signal is the attack warning signal. It is used to prevent enemy attack, accidental missile launch, or terrorist attack. It's a warbling siren and will also sound for seven minutes. You should hear a siren in Batavia. You should seek shelter inside on the lowest level in a central room. Take with you your emergency preparedness kit, which should at least have your cell phone, a flashlight, and battery-operated radio. This is so you can gather information on the event that is occurring. Most weather warnings have expiration times. For example, it might read Kane County and the City of Batavia is under a tornado warning until 7:30 PM Central Standard Time. The expiration time is when you should be able to cautiously leave your safe space. The City of Batavia does not issue an all-clear by activating the sirens. For more information on the outdoor warning system, check out the city's webpage at bataviaillinois.gov/oudoorwarningsystem. Since the outdoor warning system is only for outdoors, there are many other ways to receive warnings to keep you and your family safe. We encourage everyone to have at least one weather radio in their home. Your cell phone, for example, is another great source of receiving warnings, whether it's a weather app or through WIS, which stands for Wireless Emergency Alert System. Having your phone's alerts enabled keeps you alerted 24/7. Its location is specific, so wherever you are, it will alert you of a warning at your location. More information can be found at the ready.gov website about WIS and emergency preparedness kits. Also, TV, radio, and social media are other great sources for warnings and information. The City of Batavia ESDA Facebook page is a fine source of real-time information. Follow the same procedures as I stated earlier about taking shelter after receiving a warning. I hope this video will help everyone understand how the City of Batavia's warning systems work and some useful information on being prepared before and after an alert. Stay safe and be weather aware, Batavia. Have a great day, everyone. Okay, so basically, that went over as much as I possibly could in a three-minute video. And basically, it is be weather aware and prepared for what possibly could happen once we're under a watch or a warning. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer some questions if you have any.
It can be watched on the city website at any time, correct?
Yes. More of the ESDA site, yes. They have links to all of it, even the police site, too.
I'm talking about your little speech.
Yes. It's only on Facebook. I don't think it's on the city website, though, is it? So that'll be up there eventually. I just let you know, that's my office in the background.
Alderman Chantet?
Not as much a question, but a comment. Well, actually, I guess a question. Are there any big holes in our network for where you would deploy a siren? I know that we did recently deploy one in the third ward, and it was very well received.
According to our map from Braniff, it's got coverage over all of our areas right now. I don't think we've actually expanded any further north, south, east, or west. When we do, then we'll have to readdress that. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Alderman Beck?
How many tornadoes have touched down kind of annually over time?
Well, annually, it's around, I want to say it's around 600 or 700, depending on the season. Last year, Illinois had the most tornadoes of any state in the country last year.
In Batavia, how many specifically?
We've only had two recently. I can't remember the last one we had. It's been a while.
I can remember going to my basement for a siren like twice growing up, and then I have twice this year. It's just seemed a little eerie.
Go ahead.
So when the seven-minute siren ends, does that mean that everybody's safe and can come back up, or?
If you heard what I said, you have to check on your own to see when it expires.
The siren, the ending of the siren does not indicate that it is safe.
It's not. I mean, the idea with the National Service and us, of course, is we want to give enough warning to everybody. That warning, I hit the sirens at 6:55, I do believe, and I think it hit Batavia at 7:08, if I'm not mistaken. According to, I'll have to go back and look, but I think it was like 7:08. So that gave everybody almost 15 to 20 minutes leeway to take cover. I mean, I could have, we could have ran that siren from 6:55 to 7:30, and that's just too long. I want to, we also have to be able to hit the siren again in case another storm is following the storm because that does happen sometimes. So that's another reason why we do that.
This is a great educational moment because I think a lot of people think when the siren ends that all is well.
I know, and I've answered a few emails in that regard, and somebody wanted to know how, what the average is in the state. The average in the state for a tornado siren is three to five minutes, and we do it for seven minutes for a city council ordinance back where I have no idea how long ago.
Since I've been here.
Right. So, any other questions?
I was going to ask you if that video was shareable, but I already shared it, so it is.
Yes, it's shareable, yes. You all can share it if you want, yes. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Next item is the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and we have the president with us here. Margaret.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me attend your reading this evening. I want to thank you all for supporting Shiver by the River, our restaurant pass promotion that's going on currently. Of course, with this weather, we should have called it Sweating by the River, I guess. Who would have known? It's going great. I want to say that we've been getting some really positive feedback from residents who have been coming in to claim their prizes. One of them is here with us tonight. Congratulations, Jennifer. So the program's still going on. We're collecting feedback from the restaurants, but like I said, the residents have been loving it. They love how it's been going on for a month because that way they have many more opportunities to visit a lot more restaurants than they were able to when we ran it for one week. So we're happy to say that. Also, I wanted to say, oh, that the program runs through March 14th and fully subsidized by the city. Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. We're collecting the analytics, and we'll be able to tell the city how successful the program was after the program's completion. We are eagerly anticipating our Inspire Celebration, which will be held Thursday, April 25th, at Revelry 675. We're honored to celebrate Marge and Dave Brown, our 2023 Citizen of the Year recipients, and the Batavia RSVP as the Spirit of Batavia Award winner. The Fox Valley Patriotic Organization and the Flag Day Committee are being recognized with the Batavia Impact Award. And businesses that have made significant investment and improvements to our community will be honored that evening, too, with our special Ole Awards. The Ole Honorees for 2023 that have been selected for remodeling industrial is Larson's Packaging Products on River Street. Our new construction commercial winner is Mocha Coffee on Independence Drive. In the remodeling commercial category, Aqua Viva Restaurante Batavia on Mill Street is being awarded. Oh, also Batavia Animal Clinic on First Street, Imagine Entertainment on Randall Road, Rainology on Flynn Street, JT's Tavern and Tap on Batavia Avenue, and New Moon Beacon on Batavia Avenue as well. So please see our website for more details. We encourage all the Alderman and city staff to join us at this great event. Register on our website as an added incentive. We are going to be raffling off a trip to Kentucky, Louisville, Kentucky, and a bourbon experience tour. So if you'd like to have a chance to win that, come join us. We're doing a bourbon and wine pull, too. So if you want, come, we'll have some nice bottles of bourbon and wine. If you're willing to donate, please drop off a bottle at the Chamber office. We would really appreciate that. I want to give a friendly reminder that don't forget to take advantage of the holiday bucks that we gave out over Christmas time. Those expire, the bonus bucks expire March 31st. Chamber bucks never expire, but the bonus bucks are coming to a close. So if you still have those in your wallet or purse, take them out and spend them. In other news, the Batavia Chamber is proud to announce that we will be awarding four $1,000 scholarships to a BPS 101 senior. Our applications are open and accessible on our website. So if you know somebody who is eligible, please send them that way. We'd love to, we love giving out that money and supporting our students. And now something exciting. The Chamber I mentioned last month is offering a trip to Italy. If you've ever dreamed of exploring Pompeii and the Amalfi Coast, now is your chance. We're coordinating a trip to beautiful Italy with Geneva and the St. Charles Chamber as well. It's departing October 22nd. It will include seven nights in a first-class hotel with a professional tour manager. This trip is open to anyone and everyone, so not just Chamber members and friends across the country can join you, too. Our informational meeting, we have scheduled one in person, will be Tuesday, April 9th, at 5:30 at Sturdy Shelter. For questions and answers, we could take care of that at that meeting. The early bird discount that we're offering has been extended till April 14th, too. So we wanted it extended till after our informational meeting. Join me in extending a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the Chamber last month. We're delighted to have the following organizations as part of our growing Chamber community: the Kiwanis Club of Batavia, Geneva area, KDU and Company, Powerhouse Tools, the UPS Store 6169, Prima Coffee Roasters, Barazza and Associates, American Family Insurance, Cho Jiu-Jitsu Academy, Geneva Winery, and Key Retirement Solutions. Please see additional information about these wonderful businesses on our website. I'd like to remind everyone that of the many educational and networking opportunities the Chamber offers, with a calendar full of events, there's something for everyone. For more details, register at thebataviacamber.org. A couple of our upcoming events I want to mention is Wednesday, March 13th, we have our Coffee and Commerce at Grogner Games. Thursday, March 14th, we have a BWIB After Hours Networking at Kay Hollis Jewelers, and we will be supporting Anderson Animal Shelter at that event. On Wednesday, March 20th, at 11:30, we have a webinar that focuses on social media strategy for business. And Wednesday, March 20th, our evening networking will be held at Windmill Grill. Does anybody have any questions for me before I move on? Happy to answer any questions. Great, thank you for allowing me to cover the Chamber business tonight. Now, I would like to introduce my guest, Jake Wolf. Jake is a Batavia resident and a high school grad. I know he's going to mention that. He's the owner of both Howling Wolf Canoe and Kayak and also Wolf Transportation. Jake is an integral part of our community, and I'm excited for him to share the information about his wonderful businesses. Come on up, Jake.
Thank you. Awesome. All right. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. So like Margaret said, my name is Jake Wolf. I'm a resident of Batavia. I live on the east side. I'm also a graduate of Batavia High School, graduated in 2010. I have a couple different businesses in town. First one I want to tell you about today is Howling Wolf Canoe and Kayak. Howling Wolf Canoe and Kayak is a canoe and kayak rental operator on the Fox River. We offer both rentals, canoe and kayak rentals, lessons, guided tours, shuttles, and used equipment sales on the Fox River. We are based out of the Aurora Athletic Club, which is located at 550 Clearwater Drive in North Aurora. We do two different trips. We have a trip to North Aurora and a trip to Batavia. Our North Aurora trip launches at North Aurora Island Park. It takes approximately 30 minutes to an hour. Really good one for a quick after-work paddle. And then our Batavia paddle, that one's super fun. That one is two to three hours. What's really fun about that one is you paddle up to the cave at Red Oak Nature Center. Once you're done at the cave, you paddle right by the bald eagle's nest at Mooseheart. You can't see the nest from the river, but the eagles are always flying up and down that section of the river, so you can usually see them. And then in North Aurora, you can either stop in at Harner's for a donut, or you can stop in at Jucalita Tacos, grab a taco, and continue on down. So Batavia's super fun. Like I said, we launch at Glenwood Forest Preserve. That one takes about two to three hours. Logistically, how it works is everyone meets us at the end, which is, and the end is the same for both trips, North Aurora and Batavia. We meet at the Aurora Athletic Club. You'll hop in our van. We'll drive you up north, either North Aurora or Batavia, and then you'll float back on down south to your vehicle. So that's our rentals. We also offer lessons as well. So our lessons are really great for those people who are interested in kayaking but don't really know quite where to start. You have a big race coming up, like the Mid-American Canoe Race. You want to get prepared for that. Or you have a big trip, like you're going to the Apostle Islands, or a big Boy Scout trip that you guys want to prepare for. So we have Introduction to Kayaking, Level 1, Level 2. We have Introduction to River Kayaking, and then we have Rescues and Recovery. So we have a whole bunch of different classes that we offer. All of our instructors are certified. So yeah, classes are great. And then we also offer guided tours as well. So we have a number of different guided tours: Morning Yoga and Paddle, Sunset and Smores, our Fall Colors Guided Kayak Tour, super popular, and our Blues Cruise is probably our most popular. Every Wednesday, June through the end of September, we do a guided tour every Wednesday night. It's a one-hour guided tour, ending with a live blues band and a food truck. So that one's super fun. Make sure to check that out on our Facebook. And then kind of our main goal with Howling Wolf Canoe and Kayak, my personal goal, is to start a 501(c)(3). It'll be a therapeutic recreational outfitter specializing in youth at risk, veterans, addicts, and victims of trauma, to show people healing through the outdoors right in our own backyard. So that's our main goal with this company. Like I said, we're based out of the Aurora Athletic Club, 550 Clearwater Drive in North Aurora. Our website is howlingwolf.com. Wolf is, Wolf has an E at the end, spelled the same way as my last name. My name's Jake Wolf. So that's www.howlingwolf.com. You can find us on Facebook. Just type in Howling Wolf. You'll find us. And then our phone number, you can either call or text us, is 630-344-9744. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
We are currently planning to replace our dam with a series of stepped rock weirs, including a sort of a River Rapids channel. Are you looking forward to that?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah. I think, I think that would be, that would be a huge improvement for the area, especially for kayakers. That would give us a lot more access right now. To be honest, we operate south of the Batavia Dam just because it's not a very easy portage right now. So I would love to operate further north. Our, our big, big goal, we want to have a, we want to have a location in every town from South Elgin down to Yorkville. So that's the big goal, and the Fox River just got designated as part of the National Water Trail System with the National Park System. So that's big news. So that's really good for us and for our community. So, so yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Alderman?
So for your guided tours, is that family, like for how young?
Yeah, definitely. That's a great question. So our Sunset and Smores, that's a great family tour. We also have, we have tandem kayaks as well. So to be in a tandem kayak, the only requirement that we have is you have to be at least 30 pounds and follow directions. So that is the, that's the big caveat. So two to three years old generally works okay. And the Sunset and Smores, that's the short one. So that's only 30 minutes to an hour. So that one's really good for younger ones. The longer Batavia tours, those are generally better for, for older, for, for, you know, for adults. So to be in a single-person kayak by yourself, you need to be at least about 15 years old and 100 pounds. But, you know, if you give us a call and, you know, that person's kayaked before, we can definitely figure it out. Great question. Thank you.
Questions? Alderman Chantet?
When you do form that 501(c)(3), please definitely let all of us know about that.
Yes, sir.
I have a special place in my heart for at-risk youth or people with addictions, issues, and whatnot. I've lost some friends and to suicide and whatnot. Also, please publicize that. I've been assessing a late fee on myself when I show up late to meetings, so I'm going to make a contribution to this organization when, when you do. So please, please do form it. A second question. When you get a chance, could you please weigh in a little bit more detail on the dam? I'd be very curious if someone who actually is working in the water in our neighborhood.
Yeah.
Unbeknownst to many people, you're, you're in the trenches. I want to hear in a little more detail what benefits you would see to improvements, what types of improvements would be the bare minimum to make, and what would happen with a complete dam removal, how that would change your business. And then the third thing, I hear that there's a really cool spot up in St. Charles, and I'm interested that you're doing a lot of different tours.
Yeah.
When I was in Boy Scouts, we used to start in like Geneva.
Yep.
We would end up in Yorkville, and we would portage in Batavia.
Yeah.
Get a little snack, whatever.
Definitely.
Is there a spot in St. Charles you could start, maybe end in Batavia? The reason I ask is there's, there's a section of water that's like Olympic-grade. Is that, is that correct?
So I, I'm not sure I know exactly what you're talking about. So in North, or I'm sorry, in St. Charles, above the dam, there is that big impoundment. So that might be what you're referring to as like the Olympic.
A little bit more north of that. It's up near Red Gate. Apparently, they fly in from all over the country. There's a certain section of water where it is completely pristine and quiet. So like, you see, was it the, it's, it's rowing teams, and then like the, they do, they fly in from all over the country. And I keep hearing about this thing, and I've seen people out there in a place where you'd never guessed people would, would be at. Something special out there.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I'll have to check that out. So in answer to your question about the dam, so dam removal has been something that's been on my radar for a very long time. Kind of my background, I've been involved in this in the community for a long time. I used to run the kayak shop in downtown Aurora. So So at the end, could you clarify your question real quick?
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. If you want to sit down, think about it, maybe put it in writing if you'd like to, because you kind of already answered the question, but just maybe a little more detail, because it affects your business, and it really should affect our decisions if the solution we currently have in front of us does not go through, which it might not.
Yeah, definitely.
That's why I want to delve into this a little more. You are a subject matter expert.
Yeah, of course. And I think if we wanted to kind of open that can of worms, I have a whole lot that I can say about dam removal and about the pros and the cons, because it's going to affect a wide variety of different people in our community in very different ways. It's going to affect me much, much differently than the people that have the homes at the depot pond. So I think for today's purposes, I'll say that while I am in favor of dam removal, I think it will benefit my business. I think it does have a bunch of, it does have various impact to other community members. So I would like to put a pin in that, and I'd be happy to come back and talk at great lengths, but I could literally talk for hours about this, and I want to respect your time.
Please, and thank you. I'm very interested in what you have to say.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Well, we thank you for coming down, and great to hear about you, and wish you the very best in the years ahead in Batavia. I think you've got a growing business on your hands.
Thank you, thank you. Can I tell you about my second business real quick?
Certainly.
Okay, great. So my other business is Wolf Transportation. So Wolf Transportation is a luxury transportation provider based out of Batavia. So we are a limousine and black car service. So we have a number of different vehicles. We have a 2021 Lincoln Navigator. We have a 2017 Lincoln MKT. We have a 15-passenger Ford Transit and a 15-passenger Mercedes Sprinter. So really, no matter what it is, where you're going, what you're doing, whether it's a transportation to and from the airport, anniversary date night, special events, corporate events, we also do holiday lights tours. So we'll fill up the van, we'll take you and your friends and all the kids to Larson Family House. We have a few routes through Aurora, Naperville. So yeah, we're fully licensed and insured. We have medallions. We're all on the up and up. And our website to request a quote or to make a reservation is wolftransportation.com. Wolf spelled with an E at the end, so www.wolfetransportation.com. You can also call or text us. Our phone number is 630-344-9744. And you can also shoot me an email. My email is jake@wolftransportation.com. Any questions about the limousine service?
Navigator from Batavia to O'Hare.
Navigator, Batavia to O'Hare. So right now, so normal price for that one is $180. We're doing a new customer special of $150. And that does include, you can put in the notes, if you like any drinks or snacks, we'll include that for free, too.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Who else? Thank you again. Best wishes on your adventure there.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number 10, the Batavia Square Development. And we have seven ordinances to pass?
We're skipping one.
Skip one.
Number, your honor. There's a difference. There's a motion.
And on the printed one?
It's on the 11.
Okay, we're not going to handle the 11.
Yeah.
Okay. But the rest of these, we have to vote one at a time, correct?
Correct.
All right, under the Batavia Square Development, we have Ordinance 2024-003, Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map from General Commercial to Mixed Use. Would you care to make a motion?
I do have those, your honor. Should we do item 10 that was on the?
Printed on the yellow.
It's on the webpage, though.
It's actually listed at number 11 on your printed agendas.
Oh. It's in a different spot.
The agenda's had different than this, apparently.
Okay. As long as it's there, and we're taking them in the order, they're both on there for tonight.
So we're going to vote then on all six of these separately, right?
Yep.
Okay, we've just introduced Ordinance 2024-003, Amendment to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for General Commercial to Mixed Use. Somebody want to make a motion or discuss?
Motion, your honor.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. I might just note for the audience, these have been extensively discussed at committee meetings, and everybody's had their chance to ask the questions and make refinements to it. So this isn't just something that we're blowing through the wind here. This is a number of hours of study and review by the council and committee sessions has been taken for these. Okay, moving to item B, which is Ordinance 2024-004, Amendment to the Zoning Map from General Commercial to MU Mixed Use Development District with Planned Development District Overlay.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay, for the approval of Ordinance 2024-004. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
The Ordinance 2024-004 is approved, 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Moving to item C, which is Ordinance 2024-005, Text Amendment for the Zoning Code to Allow Certain Uses as a Conditional Use in the MU Mixed Use District.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay, for the approval of Ordinance 2024-005. Any discussion further? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
No.
That one passes, 12 yes, one no, and one absent. Okay, moving to item number D, which is Ordinance 2024-007, Conditional Use for a Motor Vehicle Sale and Leasing, New and Used.
Move, your honor.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay, for the approval of Ordinance 2024-007. Any discussion?
Point on this, your honor. We did have a comment or question that I think went unanswered at the meeting, where someone from the public asked about the traffic. We did discuss that at an earlier meeting, and because the original use of that property as a Sam's Club had exponentially more traffic in and out of it every day under that use, we didn't have to put any other restrictions on that property for the storage and the car dealership use, because the traffic would be generated, would be less than what it was originally designed for.
The three streets is not enforced. The signage request is not enforced.
Other comments on that? Should we move to C?
I'd vote on that one.
Excuse me, call the roll, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
That one's approved, 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to C, which is Ordinance 2024-006, Conditional Use for Indoor Personal Property Storage Unit. Moved by Wolf?
Second.
Second by Malay. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
Motion's approved for 2024-006. Moving to item F, which is, no, yeah, F, which is Resolution 2024-009-r, Preliminary Final Plata Subdivision for Batavia Square Subdivision.
Second.
Moved by Wolf, second by Malay. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
F is approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. I just want to make the comment that I had the opportunity over the last, I don't know what, it's been two or three months, to spend several meetings outside of the council meeting with the petitioners on this thing, and I think there may be a couple of them sitting in the audience, but they were very concerned about whether or not we were going to do all we just did. And to have the whole thing be rolled out under, it was six motions, and got one no vote out of all those votes was pretty impressive. So they knew how to respond to your concerns and ideas, and we've got what I hopefully is going to be recognized by people out there on the northwest side as a very winning project for kind of revival of the old Sam's Club building. So I'm pleased that we were able to do that, and just took the time and the understanding and the conversation, the dialogue with the city council and the plan commission to get this done. So the system here did work very well in this particular case. So thank you.
In what we have them here, if we could ask, if one of you could come up and just let us know when you think you're going to start on this and when you think you will be ready to be open, just so the public is aware.
Before I answer that question, I want to say thank you to everybody that's sitting here, staff, council. We're very excited to be here. The mayor's made himself available to us a few times that we need him to, but we started off with the meeting at the Sam's Club at the very onset of this. I think this was March of 2023, if that's correct. So just about a year ago. But in any case, to answer your question, we are in for, we've submitted for permit for Phase 1 of the project, which is the site work and the subdivision of the building. We expect to have that permit in the next 60 days or so, and we are hoping that Phase 1 turnover to the Tesla developer, which is me, will occur, and middle to end of July, and my work will take about six months before I turn it over to Tesla. So end of December, between December and end of January, is when Tesla will take over and do their build-out, which should be about three to six months. So the long-winded answer to your question is mid-2025 opening.
Welcome to Batavia.
Thank you very much. We're very happy to be here, and I say that very sincerely. Thank you very much. We appreciate, we appreciate everything, and we look forward to a ribbon-cutting.
You guys were nice folks to deal with. I've had some others in here who wanted to play, not on this, but over the years, wanted to play games with the city council and sometimes tried to split them up and get so many to vote against, you know, and all this. You guys weren't like that. You were just trying to get the job done, and you stayed on the right track, and you got it done. So I appreciate very much what you did and how you handled it.
I appreciate it, and to respond to that, I would have given up a long time ago had I not had the access to you that we did. So we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number 11, Direct Staff to Negotiate a Contract for the South River Street Study with Huzel Levine. Somebody want to make that in the form of a motion? We talked about this at great length at committee.
I will make that motion that we direct staff to negotiate a contract with South River Street Study with Housia Levine.
Second.
Motion in second for the approval of that directive. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer. Siron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no, no's and an absent.
One absent.
One, oh yeah, excuse me, one absent. Okay, moving to item 12, which is motion for formal bidding and award contract to Brant Excavating for Water Main Work at Prairie and Wilson. Who's got this, sir?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor, for that. Wave formal bidding and award contract to Brant Excavating for Prairie and Wilson Water Main Work.
Second.
Motion in second for the approval. Any further discussion on the waiving of the formal bid and awarding it to Brant Excavating? If not, Kirk, call the roll, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Chancet.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Siron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Item 13, which is resolution 2024-034-R authorizing execution of contract with Brant Excavating for preliminary water work associated with Prairie-Wilson intersection improvements.
Moved.
Motion in second for that. Any further discussion? Kirk, taking the final vote on that, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Chancet.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Siron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no, no's one absent. So, that one, I think it's already under work, so we're just totally legitimatizing it here tonight.
The project has started, and I would encourage everybody on the council to share the link to the city's website on what's happening over there and how traffic is being diverted, how it's scheduled, and how things are going, so that as many people as we can contact know what's going on over there, because it's going to be a lot of disruption to that side of town.
Absolutely.
It's not that bad.
No, I agree with it. You just got to stay off, or South Prairie going north, that's where the big obstruction is. Alderman Lehman?
You know, I've seen comments, and I've heard comments in, you know, just curious about schools and busing and just, you know, like, emergency vehicles and how everything is going to be getting through that intersection. There's a lot that happens there at certain times of days and just.
They were all brought in and conversed about how to do it, what was going to be the problem, and I'm very proud of the staff. They did a nice reach out with everybody, and certainly the police and fire are our people, so they probably know better than anybody, and there probably will be days when some street that was closed for five is now open for two or stuff like that. So, we'll be able to communicate all that to everybody, and we just have to work with it.
Establish alternate routes, and we have also had to post no parking on some of those streets that we will now use for emergency access in the event that Wilson Street is not available. At this point, it is still available, but everybody has been brought in and made aware of how we need to kind of change operations in order to accommodate this project, but then also still be able to provide excellent service.
I know for many residents, it's the unknowns that always get.
Of course.
People concerned, but obviously, the city staff is doing what needs to be done to make sure that things continue to run smoothly, so thank you.
Vogelsinger?
Yes, quick question. Sure this has been stated, but one question that I have gotten several times is what is the estimated completion date?
We are going to hope that we, it's going to take all of this construction season, but it's our hope that we could be done by the end of this year. Is that correct, Gary? Yes. So, we're aiming for November finish.
Thank you.
Questions from the council on this?
There are so many aspects to this project, you know, the replacement of both of the legs of the railroad crossing, as well as converting this to signalized intersection along with the reconstruction of the road and all of the utility work that goes into it. It's an aggressive schedule, but we're confident at this point that we can do it. Yes.
One more question.
Sure.
And it's actually just more of clarification for the public. The current one-way on Prairie Street is temporary.
It is one-way, but it will flip to a different one-way halfway through the project.
Then when the project is done, it goes back to normal.
Yes, then it will be bi-directional, is the intent. Thank you for the clarification question.
Hey, Laura, I guess, Your Honor, the administrative report.
Yes, I am. Just wanted to let folks know, we had the gentleman up here from the kayaking company. March 12th is actually when we are going to be taking a look at the Batavia-Fox River Corridor master plan and approving that or making any amendments as you see fit, so I'll be sure to invite Jake back for that discussion. We're also planning on April 9th, at that committee of the whole meeting, to have a discussion about the setup on North River Street now that the one-way conversion has been completed, just to discuss issues like where the benches and planters will be going, what will be the, you know, regulations with regard to having outdoor events, and just talk about all things North River Street as we head into this year's outdoor dining season. We had issues with Code Red. We think that we have, and we know that we have had those issues resolved, and so Code Red is up and running. We actually have sent out two alerts. One went out yesterday evening, and that was to let people know about the Prairie and Wilson Street construction project, and then today there were some trading maneuvers going on with the police department and FBI, and we had started to get some concerned citizens about that activity, and we were able to push out messaging right away about that. So, we're really happy to have that new tool, and we encourage everyone, if you haven't signed up already, please do so. You can do so by going to the city's website. It's right there on our homepage that lets you know how to sign up for Alert Batavia. The plan commission is going to have their regular meeting this Wednesday. On that agenda are various text amendments to the zoning code to correct and clarify certain uses in various zoning districts, as well as approval of a plat of subdivision for a lot split on South Red Ant Road. And the plan commission will also be holding a special meeting on March 13th to consider development plans for the former Siemens Furnace and Wyrich properties at McKee and Van Norwick. The development is proposed as the Ashton Ridge subdivision, and it would consist of 73 single-family homes and 89 townhome units. The meeting on March 20th will be canceled due to hosting that special meeting. Then in public works, a couple of things you'll notice on the turnaround that's on the west side of City Hall, that public properties and services personnel recently completed reconstruction of the base of that windmill structure that's located there, and the base had just completely rotted out and was in need of full replacements, and the new base will be painted once the outside temperatures permit, and then we're also working on that windmill top of it. I was walking my dogs on the east side of the river yesterday, and I noticed that you can see that structure just even all the way across the river, and it's really beautiful. I think they did a very, very nice job with it. And then also, the newest Welcome to Batavia sign has been installed at Route 25 and Fabian Parkway, so if you're in that area, check that out. We're so happy to be able to replace all of those, and that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Laura? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other business from the council? Alderman Malay?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. A former colleague from my time at the middle school reached out to me to inquire about an opportunity for some of his students. Keith Osvath is a band director at the middle school, and he wanted to know if he could bring a group, one of his ensembles, to play for us prior to a council meeting, so I think we'll try to find a good date for that, and we'll enjoy that music, so.
I mean, I think there's a holding on all this, on the, if we can bring the community in here to make presentations or little concert or something, that's good stuff. I mean, that shows that what Batavia's all about and what we have going for us, so that really is a good thing to have, so please encourage that.
Yep, he was thinking sometime in April or May, so.
Probably around Tax Day.
Yeah.
It'd be a nice night to play some music for us.
All right, going to the mayor's report, I'll be very quick. I just wanted to share a couple of experiences I've had in the last couple of weeks. I got visited last week by four realtors from the city of Chicago, and I knew one of them, so he brought three more with him, and he wanted to bring them out here because they wanted to see just what Batavia was all about, because they have, all of them have had experiences now in Chicago where their clients have said, oh, we want to move out to Batavia, and we're leaving the north side of Chicago, and we want to go out there because we like what we see. And they were very impressed with our Batavia Commons Building out there on Kirk Road. They're right next to Fermilab, which is 242 units, of which I am told almost every one of them is either under contract or totally occupied, so it's, and if you go examine where these people have come from, a large percentage is coming to us from Chicago. Now, there's nothing wrong with it. It's people that have a lot of money in their pocket, and they just want to move to a different type of an environment than they perceive that we got. So, I just, I don't know if we should pat ourselves on the back or just keep our mouth shut and just let it happen, but it's not like it's bad things happening. It's people wanting to move in here, and we are a targeted community for them to want to be. I've had other people point out to me, and Chief Maza and myself are about to begin an entourage into, we now have six senior living communities in Batavia, starting with the Homestead and River Rain and the Landings and whatever have you. So, next week, we're starting a duel. We're going to do about an hour and a half to an hour and 15-minute presentation up at the Homestead, and I'm going to begin it by giving them a little brief history of some of the kind of famous moments that Batavia's had and who have been some of the famous people who have visited, such as, you know, Charles Lindbergh and, there's several. We have the, out on East Wilson Street, we have three places where one house was the home of Jackie D. Shannon. She won the Grammy Award in 1987. Out at Dazzle's Toine Service at Red Ant and Wilson, that used to be Feldot's Farm Supply operation, and in 1973, 20th Century Fox came to Batavia and made scenes from a movie starring Art Carney called Harry and Tano, and Art Carney won the Academy Award for his portrayals in that movie. And then out at Kirk and Wilson by Speedway Gas Station across the street, there's a big clump of trees there, and you can't see into those trees, but in those trees about 500 feet is the old Phillips Farm home, and that's where the executive director of Fermilab lives, whoever he or she is at the moment. And in 1987, I think it was, Leon Letterman was living there when he won the Nobel Prize for science. So, on East Wilson Street in Batavia, we got the Grammy Award, the Academy Award, and the Nobel Prize. And I always love to tell the story, the day we broke the ground for the turf grass at Batavia High School, Brad Stevens, who is now and still, or was and still is the state, or mayor of the village of Rosemont, his father was before him, he had donated a whole bunch of stuff to Ramblin' Ray, the disc jockey, for tickets to the Rosemont Horizon and whatever have you, or booth space and everything else, and I think he raised through the sales of that about $200,000 of the money to turf the Batavia High School field. And so, I asked Mayor Stevens, would he like to come out to the groundbreaking? He says, absolutely, but I don't want anybody to know who I am. So, he came out here, so before he came, I took him on a tour of Batavia, and I took him out on East Wilson Street, passed the Grammy Award, the Academy Award, and the Nobel Prize, and he says to me, well, Jeff, you know what I got in Rosemont, but on a history perspective, you got me beat. So, I always thought that was kind of nice. So, I just wanted you to know, we got, we have a lot of nice things constantly being said about our town for things that happened 50, 60 years ago, but we're unique, and none of the surrounding towns have those nice opportunities, and we've had them in Batavia, so we got a lot to talk about. The other thing I want to just close upon is, is that this room started today to be the early voting precinct, and so the judge, there's four judges, and they sit over there in the corner, and you come in, and you have to give them your documentation and whatever have you. So, I came down about 3:15 or so to say hello, because I know several of them, because they work here every time there's a poll, and they told me they had had 38 people in this morning, or today, to vote, which is not a lot, but as I'm standing here, in walked the door comes Kane County Clerk John Cunningham, and he had the gentleman with him that oversees the voting machines, and they were making a visit to all the early voting places. And so Cunningham and I have known each other a long time, and he says, I made this my last place because I thought you'd have one of the bigger numbers of voters today, and yes, you do. We had Batavia at 38 was one of the bigger early voting places in the county. So, I'm anticipating that that number's going to rise pretty rapidly in the next few days. I think if nothing else, it was, and this is one reason I wanted to talk about it if anybody's watching on TV, people weren't sure when this was going to open down here. Well, it's open now, so come on down, and it closes at 3:30 in the afternoon, so I think it's nine to, Laura, it starts at nine, I think, and it goes to 3:30, so that's the time you can come in and early vote, so just everybody know that. And let the record reflect that Alderman Sofa has just arrived, so he's here for the meeting. Thank you. And the final other thing I want to share with you is I have mayors calling and wanting to take tours of Batavia, and one of the mayors that has come down in recently and wanted to see the place was Mike Reed, who is the new mayor up in Hampshire, and he's got a very interesting situation going up there, because when he got elected two years ago, the city of Hampshire had already annexed and zoned 2,800 new single-family home lots. And so, there, I went up there and wandered around with them a little bit, and they're scattered all over the place. It's a, it's a big area, and that area, Huntley, Hampshire, Plato Center, and Pinky Grove are predicted by Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning that they are probably going to grow into one of the five largest areas in the Chicagoland area, in the northwest corner of Kane County out there. And the driving forces, you are 29 miles from Rockford, and you're 29 miles from Schaumburg in Chicago, and so there's, and it's all by tollway either direction, and they now have, I was totally blown away and impressed by what I saw, Hampshire must have the largest high school in Kane County up there. I mean, I don't know about students, but the building, they have two buildings that are three stories tall, and then they have, have you been there to do a game or anything? I was, I could not believe the size of this thing, and it's got all these annexes and going every direction. If you're up there sometime, on Route 72, you can probably see the high school from some distance away, because it's the tallest thing up there, but man, is that a big school. So, I asked the mayor, he says, well, they're, they're very proud of it, and they're anticipating they're going to fill it as time goes on with all the new growth. So, when these guy, these realtors that I was just telling you about left here the other day, they were going to Hampshire. Look at that. So, Hampshire's our new big booming town, and Mayor Reed says he'd like to kind of model[1766.32]